Good afternoon and welcome. The Monday, October 15th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. Pastor Frank Custer has been kind enough to come and give us the invocation and pledge, if you could all rise.
Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we do come before you tonight and we give you praise for all that you have done for us. Lord, we think of your protection through these last few weeks from major storms. We think of all of the folks that are still reeling from these devastating hurricanes, from Hurricane Florence and Michael. Father, we lift them up and we ask that your grace and your provision will see each and everyone through. But Father, tonight we come before you and we thank you for each of these members that have come and given their time and their talents to help Currituck County, our home, move forward with hope and anticipation for a bright future. Father, we ask that your Holy Spirit would fall upon this place and that there would be great conversation and great peace and joy in moving our county forward. Thank you for all that you've done for us. We ask that you would continue to pour out your blessing upon us, your protection and your safety, and we thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Pastor Frank, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple changes to the agenda. Item A, under new business, I'd like to move that underneath the Commissioner's report prior to the public hearings. And then after the adjournment or recess of the tourism development authority, I'd like to ask closed session pursuant to GS 143-318-1113 to consult with the county attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Make a motion approve.
We have the motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment. Currently have no one signed up for public comment. Would someone like to speak this evening? And with that, I will close the public comment section. Moving on, Commissioner's report. I've got a couple things this evening, if I may. Some good news stuff. We always love good news. Congratulations to Currituck Fire EMS Deputy Chief Tim Riley and EMS Training Officer April Elmore, both who received an award for the Norfolk-based hockey team, the Norfolk Admirals, the anchors of our community awards. Recognize public servants who have aided in the strength, stability, and unity of the community through their 30-plus years of service in Hampton Roads. People are encouraged to nominate someone who has worked in a community service or public service field for 30 or more years. Deputy Chief Riley retired as a battalion chief with the Virginia Beach Fire Department following 30-plus years of service. He has served as Deputy Chief of Currituck County EMS for three and a half years. Mrs. Elmore retired as captain with the Virginia Beach Fire Department following 27 years of service and has served Currituck County for three years as our EMS Training Officer and as a paramedic. If you see him out in the public, please congratulate them. The Currituck County Water Department Operator Linda Skinner has been awarded the A Well Operator of the Year designation for the state of North Carolina. Yama Jones, Currituck County Manland Water Superintendent, has been selected to serve as President of the Northeast Section of the North Carolina Water Works Association. His tenure will run through August of 2019. One other note, it is October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And just a couple things about that. 200,000 women a year will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and 1 in 13 of those diagnosed will die this year. Early detection is the key, so keep that in mind and just keep those people in your thoughts. That would be great. And that's all I have this evening. And with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. Hall.
Currituck residents have been really great when it comes to helping out their fellow man, whether they live here in Currituck or surrounding counties. This weekend, on Sunday, from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. at the Virginia Beach Sportsplex off Prince Island Road in the city of Virginia Beach, the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention will hold a walk. Folks, it affects young, old. It has no racial bounds. Go out there and help these folks out. If you don't want to walk or you don't want to go out and cheer them on, you can go to the website. The local representative is K-G-O-L-L-E-R at A-F-S-P dot org. Or one of our local teams that will be walking in this event, you can call her at 252-384-3391. Again, there are a lot of great people out there, and to lose one is not acceptable. So if you know somebody that's having a hard time, find somebody that can help them, ask them if you can do something for them, give them the numbers here at the county for Social Services, American Red Cross, or this group here. Please, folks, we can't afford to lose anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Commissioner White?
Thank you, sir. This past weekend, I got my Focus on Currituck magazine. I'm sure everyone else did, too. I just want to encourage people to take the time to read that. It is a, it's actually a really good piece of literature and contains a lot of information. So I just wanted to reemphasize that, take a moment to read it. There's some good info in there and quite a few things that I don't even think of as a Commissioner that I pick up from reading that magazine. Over Columbus State Weekend, myself and Commissioner Beaumont, attended the Whalehead Property Owners Association meeting, and I thought that went exceedingly well. We were able to interact, talk to people, and really help disseminate the proper information. And I'm sure you would agree, they really appreciated us being there and we spent a lot of time there talking to people. I also attended the Village of Ocean Hill meeting, same thing. They were just very excited to see someone from the county show up. So if you guys, I know it was a busy, typically a busy weekend, but in years to come, if you have time to go to these things, I would encourage other Commissioners to go. You'll find a lot of friendly faces there that really appreciate us showing up and really letting them know that we are engaged in paying attention to Corolla and their investment in Currituck County. And this evening in our consent agenda, for those that look at it, you'll notice there's $100,000 in there from occupant tax money used for some design work. We, myself and Commissioner Payment, met with county staff and looked at ten acre tract we have over there that we're going to be designing, some new things going on in Corolla, and a new ABC store will be one of those things to put on that tract, as well as possibly some new county offices and a visitor's center. So if that jumps out at anybody, that is what that is in there for. And then lastly, I'll be traveling with the tourism department, the 29th and 30th, to a conference in Asheville. That money, we're going to be changing our policies here about what we do and how we do it. I just thought it important to mention that, that I'll be going out with them and hopefully learn more about advertising and tourism and promotion and all that good stuff. That's it for me. Thank you.
Maybe the rest of us missed that invite.
What invite?
To Asheville.
Yeah, no, you're not going.
Fair enough.
They don't like people with blue suits.
Fair enough. Commissioner Beaumont?
So kind of also tagging on the Whalehead Property Owners Association meeting, one of the topics that was brought up had to do with one of our public roads that also provides access to the beaches, and that's Benito Road, which historically is in a hole. And I sit as a member of the Albemarle Rural Planning Organization, which is the NC DOT interface with Division One with road projects, and I was very pleased to find out, we interacted with our area's engineer, and NC DOT is committing to help and made no bones about it, to some degree financially, in establishing decent drainage on that road to prevent it from continuous flooding. So that was what we were hoping for, and I was glad to get a commitment from NC DOT relative to that. And then finally, the other thing that, you know, again, tagging on to the Whalehead Property Owners Association, there's a lot of property associations out there. I would suggest to you, it's highly unlikely that we, as the board, have any idea of what that schedule looks like. I'm sure we couldn't commit to being at every single one of them, however, it would be nice. This is kind of reaching out to the leadership of those organizations. I don't think there's a Commissioner on this board that's, you know, afraid of coming and sitting down and listening to the local areas. Vent, discuss, whatever, as long as it's civil, I think we're all willing to engage. But I would encourage you to contact me or any of the other Commissioners that you want to take, have an opportunity to engage with. Anyway, that's all I got.
Commissioner Rethridge?
I'd like to again remind everybody that one-stop voting starts this coming Wednesday. It'll be Monday through Wednesday from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon. And it's at the Election Board Office. That's the only site we have here in the county. And they will be open one Saturday, which is Saturday, November the 3rd, from 8:00 to 5:00. So make sure you get out and vote, and if you can't vote early, they have, for the November election, they're open from 6:30 in the morning to 7:30 in the evening. So there's no excuse for anybody not getting out to vote. And I'd like to thank the Chairman for mentioning Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It is very important. I'm an eight-year survivor, and I've just had a niece that was diagnosed with breast cancer. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rethridge. A point of clarity, I believe early voting's open from 7:00 to 7:00 this year.
I don't know what she has on her website.
Yeah, it's, early voting's going to be open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And one Saturday, I believe, that's next Saturday, from 8:00 to 5:00. And then the Sunday before the election, it will be from 12:00 to 3:00.
She needs to update her website.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just happen to know those dates. I don't know why. Yeah. Yeah. Just for clarity, for the public. Sorry.
Is it my turn?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Couple things. Had the opportunity this past weekend to be out in Maple Park and seeing the baseball fields full of kids and a tournament going on. So for those that questioned building and really the Maple Park industrial area, it was phenomenal to see how many kids out enjoying the park. So again, it's a project that was a long time coming. We still need some accommodations, but we're working on that, and I hope that the board continues to work on accommodations. Also had the opportunity to go over and check out the progress on the dog park that's being built in Maple Park, so that should be open in the next couple weeks. Although I said that two weeks ago, but I've actually been over there and seen everything on the ground. This Sunday, in conjunction with the 350th anniversary of our region, the Moyac women are having a farm-to-table event, and it's right here in front of the historic courthouse. The event begins at 12:30, and the event is free to anyone that wants to come out in the public. The farm-to-table event where they're having, serving food, there is a cost. It's $10 in advance or $15 a day of. The menu consists of barbecue and fried chicken from Currituck Barbecue, and then locally-sourced sides, including corn on the cob from Roberts, peach cobbler using Morris Farm peaches, and stewed apples from Knott's Island, and then there's much more. So I invite you to come out. The Girl Scouts will kick off the presentation at 12:45. And then there's the chorus. Rodney Sawyer's going to be doing some storytelling, then some more entertainment by Brad Privet. The FFA will do a presentation at 3:15. Then we'll hear from the high school chorus. The middle school was earlier. And then at 4:15, Janet Rose will be doing some storytelling. And then at 4:30, there's the conclusion and the lowering of the flag. So it's a family-friendly event. There will be local vendors present, so it'll be a fun time right here in front of the courthouse, so Sunday, beginning at 12:30. And then just as a reminder, on November 3rd, because we won't see you until after that date, a reminder that the Kansas City barbecue that was rescheduled from the previous storm is on November 3rd from 1 to 4, the Kansas City BBQ cook-off. And also the People's Choice Awards that I believe that one of our Commissioners, that resembles Commissioner Beaumont, is going to be in one of those categories of the People's Choice Awards. He'll be cooking and contributing. And then the bull-riding rodeo starts at 5:00 p.m. So got a lot of fun community things coming up in the next couple weeks.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I could piggyback a little bit. Also, right before that event on November 3rd at the same location, the 350th anniversary, they will have an event starting at noon, and that is free to the public.
And Mr. Chairman, I did look under the North Carolina State Board of Elections, and the hours that I announced are correct. Not all counties have the same one-stop-voting hours. So it is the correct, and it's correct on our website.
Okay.
Excuse me. It starts Wednesday, and it's Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. And then she's open one Saturday, which is November the 3rd, from 8:00 to 5:00. And if you go to the North Carolina State Board of Elections website, it gives the different counties and hours they're open.
Some are open from 7:00 to 7:00?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Payment?
Two things tonight. First of all, I have received phone calls in my district, and I'm sure other Commissioners have as well, regarding the Department of Transportation with the drainage, the ditch, and some of the roads and all that. And I did make a phone call to Representative Bob Steinberg and, you know, address the concerns of local citizens here. And, you know, he is very receptive of the conversation, and he informed me that, to let everyone know that he does talk with DOT on a weekly basis. They are extremely backlogged, as you can imagine, with all the storms and everything that we've got going on. But he said that all these issues will eventually get addressed, but it's just going to take some time. But he just wanted me to make sure I made that aware to the constituents out there that he does relay the information to them. And secondly, everyone knows that the opioid epidemic is pretty rapid, and it's a big issue we have locally, nationally, at a state level. The Chamber of Commerce, along with the Wild Goose Rotary, is going to be bringing in a representative from the state of North Carolina Health Department to come down and discuss the opioid epidemic at a state level. We will have some regional representatives as well to talk about a regional, and I believe we're going to get the sheriff as well to discuss locally as well. That's going to be October 24th. It's going to be like a lunch and learn. If you're interested in it, they're only going to accept 40 people because it's where we're having it. But you can contact the Chamber of Commerce. They can give you some more information on the cost and where it's going to be at. But I think it'd be very informative for people out there to know what we're doing to help combat this very important issue out there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Payment. That's what I have for Commissioner's report this evening. Moving on to new business, consideration in action PB 16-12, Glenmore Ridge requests for a two-year extension of the preliminary plat use permit for a conservation subdivision consisting of 48 residential lots located on the south side of Tolls Creek Road behind the Moyac Library. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The issue before you tonight is a use permit preliminary plat extension, two-year extension for the Glenmore Ridge subdivision along Tolls Creek Road behind the Moyac Library. In 2008, the board approved Currituck Reserve Plan Unit Development. And since that time, as we all know, the economy turned, and the approval for Currituck Reserve Plan Unit Development expired, and that area was divided up into three separate developments, Glenmore Ridge, Water Lee, which are the same developer, and Currituck Reserve. The applicant allied properties is asking for an extension because he was working with the owners of what is now the Currituck Reserve, a much smaller than the original approval of Currituck Reserve Planning Development, on realigning a road, the Campus Drive, getting the right-of-way platted, and a recombination plat for the two developments. So in getting all this set up, the applicant has requested an extension due to these circumstances. And I'll take any questions that the board may have. I think the applicant is here tonight to speak to this, his request. This is typically, as well within the purview of the Board of Commissioners, to extend a use permit preliminary plat for good cause, and you see the applicant's request in your packet.
Any questions for Ms. LaCicero? Mr. Bissell, would you like to come forward?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we happen to have available a copy of the Campus Drive right-of-way plat?
I don't.
If not, it's okay, and I can explain.
Yeah, probably what we need is an explanation of why, just why you need the extension.
You see, it's not the plat, but it's...
It's closed. Right. When the Currituck Reserve PUD that you mentioned earlier was approved back 10 years ago, there was a 100-foot easement that was run from this part of Tolls Creek Road through, that runs past the library that actually provides access to the Moyac Library. And it runs past the library and past this particular parcel that we're calling Glenmore Ridge now, then continues on to the west and north through what's currently Currituck Reserve and then to Water Lee. Anyway, that was an easement, but not a platted right-of-way. And that provides access to this property, but not legal access in terms of putting a plat to record. So two years ago, when we presented the subdivision plat, the preliminary plat, a condition on that use permit was that we not come back with a application for construction drawing approval until there was a legal platted right-of-way that had been agreed to. Currituck Reserve, whose property this right-of-way crosses, is just now seeking their construction drawing approval. They're kind of in the final stages of that. And we can now, we now know exactly where to plat this 60-foot right-of-way within that 100-foot easement. And so we have prepared a right-of-way plat for the remainder of Campus Drive that will serve both of these projects, and that has actually gone through a staff review and I think is ready to be recorded once everybody, once this board is in agreement with the extension of this plat.
So basically, you were waiting on Currituck Reserve?
We're waiting on Currituck Reserve. There's now an agreement between Currituck Reserve and Glenmore as to where this right-of-way is going to be and who's doing what.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bissell? Okay. With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we grant the two-year request for the extension of the preliminary plat use permit for PB 16-12 Glenmore Ridge.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearings. Public hearing in action PB 16-12 Glenmore Ridge, request for an amended preliminary plat use permit to add two additional lots to the original 48-lot conservation subdivision located on the south side of Tolls Creek Road, tax map 22, parcel 78A Moyac Township. If the applicant and Ms. LaCicero could please come be sworn in. Raise your right hand. Well done. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
3:30 is now.
Okay. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glenmore Ridge, located off Tolls Creek Road, once again, this is part of the original Currituck Reserve Plan Unit Development. And it is now, just for clarity, Glenmore Ridge, Currituck Reserve, and Water Lee is going to be over here, the three subdivisions that are making up what was Currituck Reserve Plan Unit Development. Let's see. So the developer or the applicant allied properties is asking for an amended preliminary plat. The existing use of this property is undeveloped farmland. It is, the parcel size is 50.67 acres total, with the project density of just under one unit, one dwelling, .99 units per acre. In September of 2016, the board approved a 48-lot conservation subdivision with 40% open space. And since then, the applicant has worked with Currituck Reserve on establishing that right-of-way and changing, acquiring more land for their property, for their project. And let's see. So it is owned, single-family mainland. It is rule in the 2006 Land Use Plan, and it is limited service in the Moyac Small Area Plan. So this was the, no, this is the, this is the current, no, this is the newsmat. I'm sorry, these got out of order. So essentially, what has happened, this property here in, like, this cream color, these are the two properties you're talking about, Glenmore Ridge, and this is Currituck Reserve's property. This property right here in the cream color has become part of the Glenmore Ridge property. And with that, it's just about 2.99 acres, and that's going to be added to their open space. So they have come and asked for two additional lots because they're acquiring more open This was the original design for the subdivision, and this is now the resubmital for the amended preliminary plat with the two new lots. They're adding an additional cul-de-sac. So everything else is going to remain the same. They are on public water, on-site septic transportation. There are going to be five-foot sidewalks. Streets will be curb and gutter, constructed to DOT standards. There is an agreement, stormwater and drainage between AH Currituck Reserve, the owner of what's left of Currituck Reserve and allied properties, with a combination of curb and gutter, swells, and stormwater ponds. The county will be accepting a payment in lieu for the 50 lots for the recreation and for the recreation and park area dedication, and for riparian buffers. There are no jurisdictional wetlands on this property. These two lots will not significantly impact our numbers for schools. They were already, and you can see here, elementary school, it'll add 12.5, middle school, four, high school, seven, this entire development. And these two lots will negligibly move those numbers. So the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, did support approval of this preliminary plat, amended preliminary plat. And this is a use permit, so we have to do preliminary, we have to do findings of fact, and I'll go over the findings of fact that staff's responsible for, that the use will be in conformity with the Land Use Plan or other officially adopted plans, and staff find... They are on public water, on-site septic, transportation, there are going to be five-foot sidewalks, streets will be curb and gutter, constructed to DOT standards. There is an agreement, stormwater drainage, between AH Currituck Reserve, the owner of what's left of Currituck Reserve and allied properties, with a combination of curb and gutter, swells, and stormwater ponds. There, the county will be accepting a payment in lieu for the 50 lots for the recreation and for the recreation and park area dedication, and for riparian buffers. There are no jurisdictional wetlands on this property. These two lots will not significantly impact our numbers for schools. They were already, and you can see here, elementary school, it'll add 12.5, middle school, four, high school, seven, this entire development. And these two lots will negligibly move those numbers. So, the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, did support approval of this preliminary plat, amended preliminary plat. And this is a use permit, so we have to do preliminary, we have to do findings of fact, and I'll go over the findings of fact that staff is responsible for, that the use will be in conformity with the Land Use Plan or other officially adopted plans. And staff finds that it is, that the Land Use Plan classifies this area as rule with densities in no more than one unit per three acres. However, the more specific Moyoc Small Area Plan classifies this area as limited service with allowable densities of 1 to 1.5 units per acre. The .99 units per acre density is proposed, that proposed is consistent with the Moyoc Small Area Plan. And some of the plan policies that being made, that being met are Policy Future Land Use 1, promote compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. Policy CC1, encourage and foster development that is compatible with rural atmosphere, transitional areas in a small-town main street feel, consistent with the vision, policies and future land use maps of the plan. Policy IS1, the cost of infrastructure, facilities, and services related to new growth and development should be borne primarily by those creating the demand. The second findings of fact that staff is responsible for is the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. Applicable state standards and guidelines shall be followed for determining when public facilities are adequate. Currituck County has adequate public facilities to serve the proposed subdivision. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Where is lot 4950 again? I'm sorry.
Well, they reconfigured with this additional cul-de-sac. So, not exactly, you can, let me go back to the, this was the original approval.
I just turned it.
Okay.
And this is the amended preliminary plat that they're proposing. So, they're adding this entire new cul-de-sac.
Can you go back to the previous one, just again, for a second? That one, okay. Okay. Thank you. The open space remains the same, or does it increase?
The required open space is 20.27 acres. They're providing 20.4, so the additional 2.99 acres that they're acquiring from Currituck Reserve is going into their open space.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. LaCicero. Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? Mr. Bissell, would you like to come forward and state your case?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, as a result of the plating of Campus Drive that we just talked about in the last agenda item, there is actually this residual parcel of 2.99 acres that is becoming part of this tract, which provides the room for these two additional lots plus additional open space. And actually, the tract will be open space, and it's actually providing, in addition to what was discussed, is providing additional stormwater management. If you go to the, back to that slide, you can see that, if you look at the pond there, and then you look at how much bigger that pond in the bottom right corner is from what was there. So, that's additional stormwater management. And in addition, where you see that pond shoreline that kind of goes, it does a semicircle there, we're providing a cluster mailbox area that will serve both Glenmore Ridge and Currituck Reserve. Because Currituck Reserve doesn't really have a good place for that. And at the time that that project was designed, I think that was right about the time the post office decided not to provide door-to-door mail delivery anymore. So, we're providing a facility that will serve both of these developments. Can I answer any questions about the plan? And then I'll do the use permit criteria.
I noticed you picked up a third, come on. I noticed you picked up a third pond. How did you guys, from the old, from it looks like from the original plat to now, you picked up a third pond at the, or the southern end of the property, I guess, or western edge? How did you guys be able to do that?
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, I should have, should have brought that up. That pond is actually located on property that belongs to Currituck Reserve. Back when the preliminary plat was done originally, we agreed to do a stormwater study jointly with Currituck Reserve and Waterly to basically do a stormwater model as to how the stormwater from all three developments was going to be handled. And as a result of that, some of the stormwater from Currituck Reserve is actually going into this long pond that's on the upper side of Glenmore, and they will actually be responsible for constructing that pond. Glenmore then is putting some of its stormwater into this pond that you see to the back that's on Currituck Reserve property. There is a declaration of stormwater management that's been agreed to and signed by all the parties as to how this is going to be constructed and who is responsible for the ongoing operation and maintenance of all these stormwater facilities. There is actually a stormwater association that has been formed called the Moyoc Stormwater Association, which will be made up of members of the homeowners association boards from each of the three developments. And they jointly will then be responsible for the ongoing operation and maintenance of the stormwater management systems. So, that's kind of the long answer to your question.
And then, there's a couple discrepancies, too, between a couple of different plats that are in our packet here. So, Pond 6, which would be the long one on the top, I guess, on one portion of it says it's going to be installed by others. Is that not the case now? Or, and then on, then on other versions, it says...
Well, the others are Currituck Reserve.
Okay. So, this is going to go in before, at the same time that the subdivision is being platted or designed and built? Is that correct?
Well, it'll actually go in ahead of time, because it's going to, it's actually part of Currituck Reserve's construction drawings now.
Currituck Reserve's construction drawings are under staff review right now, and should probably in the next couple of weeks be moving forward.
Okay.
I have a question for you. Can we go back to the slide which shows the aerial view, I think with the curve? Yes, that one. Just to disclose, I live on Old Jury Road. I do not border your property, but I am on the other side. My concern, and my neighbors as well, as any other citizen, is the ditch that borders your property that goes from where your corner is out to the road. You have one that parallels into that ditch. You know, I mean, when you change the design of the homes or anything else, do you anticipate any problem with the ponds or anything to where this is going to use this ditch more often, or is there anything we need to reconfigure?
No, our drainage is actually away from that ditch. These ponds are going to, that we're constructing are going to drain to the, to the north and east. And it will also be accepting drainage from the library. And we're working with Currituck Reserve to try to solve some existing drainage problems in the process. The other thing that we're going to do is we're going to construct a berm along that property line that you're talking about, which will actually separate that existing ditch from this development. And this is actually part of the presentation on the use not endangering public health and safety. We're, we have modeled it not just for the 10-year storm, but we've modeled it so that we can figure out how to manage the 100-year storm. And that involves the construction of about a one-high, one-foot-high berm that will actually keep any stormwater, even during the 100-year storm, from going in your direction.
And I commend you because of the fact of a good neighbor. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any further questions for Mr. Bissell? Thank you, Mr. Bissell.
Well, and in terms of the, the public health and safety, the one, we're also connecting to this Campus Drive, which is going to have a turning lane at Tolls Creek Road for traffic safety reasons. Also, we think the project is compatible. The development will be similar to, and the neighboring development houses will be in the 300s, and we think it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. I currently do not have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? With that, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve PB 1612 Glenmore Ridge for their amended preliminary plat use permit to add two additional lots with the facts and finding that were presented in addition to the stormwater plan that is in conjunction with the other properties adjoining and that have been vetted through our planning department. And that, as long as they are up and up, then I'd like to go ahead and make that motion Okay. I'm going to repeat the findings of fact that our planning director just read over. But this will not endanger the public health and safety. The use will adhere to the county health and safety standards, including recommendations made by the Albomaral Regional Health Services. The project should not adversely affect the public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or butting lands will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Land to the east has been developed into single-family homes. Land to the west has already been proposed as a conservation subdivision. This tract will be developed similarly. Over 40% of the land will be preserved as open space. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or butting lands and will not be in harmony, excuse me, and will be in harmony with the surrounding area. The use will be in conformity with the Land Use Plan or the other officially adopted plans. The Land Use Plan classifies this area as rule with densities allowed at no more than one unit per three acres. However, the more specific Moyoc Small Area Plan classifies this area as limited service with allowable densities of 1 to 1.5 units of, per acre. The .99 acres per acre density proposed is consistent with the Moyoc Small Area Plan. Some of the plan policies being met include Policy FLU 1, Policy CC 1, Policy IS 1, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Currituck County has adequate public facilities to serve the proposed subdivision.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Certainly, I can, if the clerk is ready to jot some more down.
Ms. LaCicero, did you need the other stuff? The board must include conditions upon the motion that was highlighted at the top.
You have any addition, additional conditions other than those listed in the staff report?
I just, I believe you, you made your motion to include this.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to double check.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor? We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on, PB 18-21 Grouse text amendment. Request to amend Unified Development Ordinance Sections 4.4.2 and 4.4.6 to allow temporary residences during construction of new dwellings. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little history here. When, in 2013, when the new, the current UDO was approved, we no longer allowed temporary residences, campers, to be used in conjunction with new construction. It was specifically taken out of the ordinance, and we only allowed temporary residences, campers, RVs, as residences, as far as temporary emergency construction repair. So, like, if your house was burned, or you're having to elevate your house due to flood or something like that, that was the, that is the only way that campers in conjunction with construction, temporary residences and campers are allowed in residential areas. Mr. and Mrs. Stephen and Rachel Grouse presented staff with a text amendment to allow campers, temporary residences as such, in conjunction with new construction. And as staff, we went through, and we pulled, we reviewed the permits that issued for temporary residence from 2005 to the end of August 2018. And during that period, from 2005 to 2013, was a time that we allowed campers for, with new construction. And you see, the six permit, there were, six permits were issued, one for a temporary residence for new construction, four were used, were issued for repair of fire damaged structures, and one was issued while raising a flood-prone structure. So, of the permits, that six permits, only one was for a new residence from 2005 to 2018. And in changing, in recommending or considering a text amendment, we also do what we call benchmarking, where we go out and we see what other local governments are doing. And we reviewed, staff reviewed, other coastal North Carolina communities about construction, about having a temporary residence during new construction, constructing a dwelling. So, Dare, Pasquotank, Perquimans, Brunswick, Pender, and New Hanover Counties, none of those allow campers for new construction. Camden County allows the use for a six-month period, which can be extended for up to three months. And Carteret County allows for a nine-month period with no extension. And Chawan allows the use for one year, and the permit may be renewed for another year. And we also, considering a text amendment, staff also looks at the Land Use Plan consistency. And we found that this was, is not consistent with our Land Use Plan, because the plan says to exercise caution, foresight, and common sense in dealing with the risk of coastal development. And temporary residents are not safe as permanent dwellings, and by continuing to limit the number of allowable temporary residences, the county will exercise caution by reducing the number of dwellings subject to a higher risk. So, you see the review standards there that we can go over. So, staff recommends, does not recommend this text amendment. However, the planning board heard this at their meeting last week, and they recommended, well, they were concerned, they wanted to see approval on a case-by-case basis. And the only way that we can really do that on a case-by-case basis is a use permit. So, the planning board recommended campers as temporary residences for new construction in all area, in all zoning districts that allow residence, single-family residences as a use permit. That was planning board recommendation, and staff does not, the staff does not recommend this text amendment. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions from the board.
Have you, Ms. LaCicero, have you guys had any, we've had some problems with people just using campers, have we not, just in general, as a residence, or have them beside their house, or people living in them? Is that, is that a problem now in the county?
Um, it has been in the past, and it continues to be, you know, code enforcement issue. Someone has a camper, and somebody wants, needs a place to live, it's, you know, it's not allowed, if you've got a single, you know, if you've got a dwelling, it's not allowed having, and a camper, having someone live in it on your property.
Okay.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? Mr. Grouse, would you like to come up and speak?
Yes, sir.
If you could state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Steve Grouse, 2195 Ocean Pearl in Carova Beach. I would respectfully disagree with some of the findings in this. I can't argue that permanent dwellings certainly are more safe than temporary. However, in 2003, during Hurricane Isabel, while we were building our current residence, we actually lived in a 30-foot travel trailer. It was tied down with a mobile home, auger-type anchors, survived with no damage at all. So, I think with the proper planning and execution, certainly, it is able to survive a coastal storm quite easily. In particular, the property we're building on, 1430 Ocean Pearl, is kind of in the back, very sheltered, pretty good windbreak. I've been over there on days when it was blowing 35 out on the beach, and there's almost no breeze back there at all. Also, in discussing with the planning board, also, we mentioned that we would be open to other restrictions that might be added to this if we go before you for a use permit. Certainly, if there was a big storm and there was mandatory evacuation, we'd be pulling the trailer anyway, because we'd use it to go inland. We have dogs. I'm sure, as any of you know, with pets, especially larger dogs, finding a hotel room or anything like that is, is next to impossible. So, we'd pull the trailer anyway. And one of the things they also mentioned, that it was not in the public interest to allow use of a temporary residence unless absolutely necessary. We've been residents of this county for 15 years. Certainly, if we're able to divest ourselves of our current residence, finding a rental in the market up there, even in the wintertime, is not really feasible. Again... Again, you know, we've got animals. People aren't really willing to rent for anything more than month-to-month up there, because if they lose their summer renters, that's a big source of, of income for them. And as we're building this house, cash on hand, it's not going to go as fast as if we had hired a builder. So we're looking at, you know, more than a couple of months from where we are right now, which is looking at getting our framing inspection here, end of October, early November. So we're well started on our new residence as it is right now. It's not like we're just going to put the camper on a empty lot and sit on it for a while. We're, we're invested. Pretty much everything else we discussed with the planning board last week, as far as the restrictions and on a case-by-case basis, and standing before you for a use permit, you know, with findings of fact as far as impact to our neighbors and whatever, certainly be willing to do that. Our current lot, we're kind of blessed, it's 3.7 acres. So we don't really have any neighbors back there right now. Most of the lots around us are empty. In fact, every lot in our subdivision right now is empty. There's some on the oceanfront, but none, none in our subdivision. So that was basically our argument, is that if it's allowed for people rebuilding a house, then it would only be fair to those of us that are already county residents to be able to build a house out of a temporary residence as well. I think our case is a little unique, because I am a builder, and I'm building it myself. You know, we're not, we don't have a contractor there every day onsite or anything like that, and I think most people probably wouldn't be able to do that, so they might not have the need that we do to be there onsite. It would certainly alleviate a lot of the burden of commuting and having to pick up, because we are out of the way. And even though there isn't supposed to be anybody back there, because it's a private road, we quite often do see one particular tour operator back there often, so. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Grouse?
Mr. Grouse, I don't really have a question, but I just want to make a comment that, you know, when we change amendments to our text amendments, it adheres to the entire county, and it's consistently throughout the county. And certainly, don't want to single you out and, and, you know, eliminate your, your request for the amendment, but when we make decisions like this, we have to think about the ripple effect that it's going to affect throughout the whole county. And we've had some, you know, quite a few issues, especially on the mainland, with, you know, temporary housing set up just because. So please, you know, don't think that, you know, any decision that we make tonight is just particularly towards you personally, and just your request, but we have to make a decision that's consistent throughout the whole county.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Thank you.
I hear a lot of people say that there are people living in trailers on houses that are already built. I hear people talking about living on property that has nothing and no intentions of building houses. In 2000, I built a house. I was my own contractor. I was fortunate. I was going to live in my camper, but I found a house with several outbuildings for my dogs, and it was very close to where I was building, and I live in Moyoc on ten acres, so I rented that house. It was very inexpensive, which no longer is the case. And I thought heavily about, God, it would have been great. I really thought about it, but I thought, living in a camper for the nine months to build my house, phew, I was a little bit nervous. But thank God I had my camper, because it just happened, we had two Northeasters and a hurricane, all within a month of it, and there was no power for three to five days. So I cranked up that generator on that RV, and thank God I had power, where a lot of my neighbors did not. I even had one neighbor plugging in their refrigerator. So if we allow for those that are fixing their houses or upgrading them, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to say, for the person that wants to take and build his house, and he's his own contractor, we can follow those same rules of making sure that that house is gone, excuse me, that trailer is gone, or that RV is gone at a certain period. Is it tough? Could there be unintended consequences? But either we allow it, or we don't. And so, since we allow it two-thirds of the way, but that's my take on it.
Yes, sir. And to piggyback onto that as well, that was one of the requirements we had in 2003. It had to be gone thirty days after certificate of occupancy. And they required that it be anchored, that you be hooked to, passed and inspected septic system well and permanent power. And those are all things that made it in to the discussion with the planning board last week.
And I'll just make a comment. You know, 2005, I was my own contractor. I built my own house. I wish it would have taken nine months. Took a little longer than that, contractor, but, you know, I hear what you're saying. It's difficult to find places to rent, but I did. I mean, I ended up having to rent two or three different places, because time strains were short. I couldn't stay in them long, but I was able to do it. I know you got to pay the rent, and you got to pay your, you know, be in your house, but I was able to do it, and it can be done. And it seems like it's been done for a long time in this county. It's the first time I heard that somebody really needed that. Again, like I said, I struggled through it, but I made it work. And like Ms. Gilbert said, if we change something, it's going to be affecting the whole county, and that's just my thoughts on it. And again, nothing to how this comes out, but I just, you know, listening to you, Mr. Hall, yes, I mean, that's a luxury, but I mean, I mean, you can, you can build a house. A lot of houses get built here without campers on them.
Can't you say the same thing about the folks that are fixing their houses?
Well, that's a, that's a totally different situation. It's not fixing your house, it's a house that was probably damaged through a tree falling on it, storm damage, or something to that effect, which would ostensibly be a much shorter period. We're not talking about someone who would be remodeling their home. Is that correct? Or is that, am I reading that wrong? So if you were doing a remodeling project, it's not the same thing. It's not as a repair.
While she's looking that up, Mr. Grouse, when do you propose to have your home finished?
Hopefully by next summer.
Okay, so, almost a year, so.
Yes, it'll be a little over a year from when we started.
If we were to do this first, through a special use process, what, ninety days to get in front of us? If we approve that, that way? So we still be talking another ninety days out from now?
Yes.
From the time they went through TRC and...
It would be another ninety days out, yes.
Mr. Grouse?
Yes, sir.
I completely understand your position. When we first moved to Kurtaut County, we had every intention of, you know, quickly getting a house built. We rented a house for, I think it was six months, may have gone as long as nine. And unfortunately, the property wasn't ready for us to begin development in time, so my wife and I, six kids, pregnant with number seven, and a black lab, lived in a camper while we built a house. Okay? So I completely get it. There was a exhaust, well, it wasn't exhaustive, but there was a definite process in place that said, at the end of six months, you could apply for one waiver to extend your construction process, and in the event that you had to evacuate or evacuation was called or called for by, due to a hurricane, that you too had to leave, the camper had to leave the property. As it was, a hurricane did hit while we lived in the camper, and I can tell you, Disney World had a couple of rides that weren't quite that fun. But, you know, again, our camper survived that just fine. The thunderstorm the week later, that's the one that damaged the awning. But I, I believe it can be done with the right processes in place to be able to, to do that, so. But I'm going to tell you, there's no, I don't care how big a travel trailer camper there is, they're not big enough. I will also tell you, wintertime is a miserable time to be living in a camper.
We did.
I guess my concern is enforcement. You know, we have a very large county. People put up campers, they do things they aren't supposed to do. It's already an extreme burden on the county to keep up with what we have going. And unfortunately, these rules aren't made for the people that adhere to the rules, they're more made for the people that don't. And that's where we run into so many issues in the county. That's, that's a concern I have, is being able to enforce, enforce the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, and during the normal course of construction, you have building inspectors on there throughout the process, so we already have county employees that are going to be at the job site, that would absolutely be able to ensure compliance. And I would suggest, nothing precludes anybody that's living in a house from running a pigtail out to a camper in their parking lot or their driveway after construction, or not even part of this process. Nothing, it, we'd have to stumble onto somebody that's doing that right now. Would you not agree with that, Mr. Cicero?
Yes, if we find them, or a complaint, neighbor complains about it, we'll find it.
So I would suggest, we actually have more visibility into during the construction process, but enforcement's going to be the same whether or not it has anything to do with construction.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, kind of also talking about that, if it's already an issue with enforcement, because people are doing it anyway, shouldn't it give those of us that want to follow the rules and want to do things the right way, an opportunity to do so? I mean, that's why we're here now. We could have just stuck a camper over there, probably no one would have ever said anything, because we're so far out of the way. But that's not how my wife and I operate. We're both former military, she was firing EMS, and, you know, our integrity is paramount. So that's why we're before you here today, is we want to do it right. So certainly, if we could get the county to look at the way things used to be done when we did it back in '03, and other people have done successfully, you know, just to give those of us that want to follow the rules a chance to do so.
In your staff report, there are eight conditions that if, go down the road of approval, and let me just go over them briefly, that staff recommends, that temporary residences for new construction shall, one, be limited to a six-month period during construction of a dwelling unit on the same lot. Allow that one additional period not to exceed three months. May be approved if it is determined by the planning director that such renewal is reasonably necessary to allow the proposed occupants of the permanent residential building to complete the new construction. Three, obtain a building permit for the principal dwelling unit prior to the issuance of a temporary use permit. Four, obtain all building and health permits for the inspection of the water supply, waste discharge system, and electrical installation for the temporary residence prior to issuance of a temporary use permit. Five, not use a generator to provide power. Six, be removed from the lot or disconnected from water supply, waste discharge system, and electrical supply within thirty days of issuance of the certificate of occupancy or upon expiration of the temporary use permit, whichever occurs first. Be limited to the ag, single-family mainland, and single-family isolated zoning districts. Not be permitted in the single-family outer banks, commercial or industrial zoning districts.
So this does not preclude the requirement to have a porta potty on site, correct? As part of any new construction project, you have to have some form of...
Right, you can still...
Right. So I guess my question to the applicant is, how do you propose hooking up your waste system?
We'd have our, our finished septic system installed, as we did before, and just hook the trailer directly to it. You can hook it up to the tank like you would the house, and just, okay, just change it out.
But you need, this is six months and an additional thirty days. We're here, and it could take another year, so what hap...
Three months.
Nine months total.
Nine months, yeah, okay, nine months, but he said he needs a year, so what happens if an applicant isn't done in, in the nine months, and he has nowhere to live? Do we issue it again, or we just tell him to yank it, and they got to find something to rent?
Well, there is a campground over there.
What?
Not over there.
Huh?
We would start our code enforcement process.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, then they're out of luck anyways, because then they got to find a place to rent, and otherwise, they're going to get fined every day if they're not compliant, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Grouse, you said you have a house currently that you're living in?
Yes.
Is that correct? And you've started construction already?
Yes.
So was your intent to sell your existing home to cash flow for the, the new, new project, I guess?
We haven't really decided yet. We want the opportunity. We do want to divest ourselves of our current residence, but right now, we don't really have, we can't do that until the other house is done. And, you know, it's basically, we're building this other house cash, we're not borrowing any more money.
Right.
So it's dependent on my workflow and my ability to get over there and complete it right now.
So if you had the opportunity to live in the camper, you would then put your house in the market?
Correct.
Did you find out by chance if the remodeling was part of it?
Well, it's listed under temporary emergency construction or repair residences, and it doesn't specify, but just under the temporary emergency construction or repair, I think if you're doing construction to like, a kitchen or a bathroom that would make it essentially uninhabitable, then it would be allowed. Or if you're, you know, repair from a fire, or with, like, one of the permits where they were actually raising the flood-prone structure, when you can't live in the house.
But you were, if you were remodeling your kitchen, you can take and live in a camper?
Yes, that would be my interpretation of that, yes.
So if I understand you correctly, you do have a home you're living in right now?
Yes.
And what was the purpose of you wanting to move up there in a camper?
We're actually moving south, closer to the road. Right now, we're up past the firehouse, so we're about six and a half, seven miles farther north. And we like to be closer. I mean, literally, the, the first week we started, somebody stole our fence. So, I mean, this is, we haven't had any issues since then, because we're relatively hidden, but in the same respect, we're relatively hidden. So I try not to keep too much stuff out there at one time.
I live in Shawboro, and when we built our house, we're on the main road, people were stealing from us, too.
Any further comments?
Well, I had a great contractor that built my house, sir.
Any further comments or questions for Mr. Grouse? Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I show Eddie Hyman being listed to speak about this.
I've got an audible agenda.
Okay, yeah, that's, it's on, that's under Ponderosa, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, it's on the wrong one, that's okay. The public hearing is open. Do I have anyone who'd like to speak during the public hearing? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny PB 18-21, because it is not consistent with the land use plan, specifically Goal Seven, to exercise caution, foresight, and common sense in dealing with the risk of coastal development. And the request is not reasonable and not in public interest, because use of temporary residence during new construction is not a necessary use, as evidenced by the lack of permits issued over the last eight-year period. Temporary residents are not as safe as permitted dwellings, and by continuing to the limited number of allowable temporary residents, the county will exercise caution by reducing the number of dwellings subject to higher risk. Additionally, the proposed text amendment does not result in a logical and orderly development pattern, as the permanent use dwellings should be established prior to the temporary use or temporary residence.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have five ayes and two noes. Motion passes. Moving on to PB 18-20, Ponderosa Enterprises Incorporated requests for conditional rezoning of 11.3 acres from general business and agricultural to conditional general business, CGB, for property located in Maple, adjoining Ponderosa Mobile Home Park to the north. Parcel identification number 0052000022B0000 Crawford Township. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Cicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The conditionary zoning before you tonight is for property located right next to the Ponderosa Mobile Home Park, and across the street from the county's airport and the Maple Community Center. It is currently zoned agricultural, and it is 11.6 acres in size. It is across the street, is, sorry, next to it is general business, as well as across the street, general business, heavy industrial on this side, and agri, heavy industrial to the north as well. So the, the property owner is requesting a conditional rezoning from ag to conditional general business. At this time, there is not a specific user for the property, and according to the applicant, the... the proposed uses, or only uses compatible with the GB zoning, office, commercial, personal service, institutional service, uses that will provide employment opportunities for residential, for county residents and goods and services to the county residents and visitors. So it is in the employment center of our Maple, Maple Barco Small Area Plan. And there are, there is all three airport compatibility zones located on this property. The compatibility zone one limits the uses to single-family detached dwelling, aviation-related uses, non-residential uses that do not exceed an occupancy of ten people per acre. Compatibility use zone two limits use to single-family detached dwellings, agriculture, agricultural, agriculture support and services, service uses, non-residential uses that do not exceed occupancy of forty people per acre for conservation. And compatible use zone three limits the uses to those permitted in the base zoning districts. So those, these are the three airport compatibility zones. So with a conditional rezoning comes a site plan, and this is what the applicant has submitted. One thing I do wanna point out, is in this property, if you'll notice right here along the southern property line, there is a little area of regular GB zoning that will convert to the conditional GB zoning. The conditional GB will be for this entire property. So I wanted to point that out, that that will be conditional as well, although the majority of the property is zoned ag. So the applicant had came before us last year about this time, to, he wanted to do a straight rezoning to market his property. And working with the applicant, it didn't make it past Planning Board, and we, as staff, we just could not support that. Because of the location of our, of the airport, and the location there next to the county's investment in Maple, Maple Commerce Park, and in the community center there, we really wanted to have a little bit better idea of what the end product was gonna look like. So during this last year, Ponderosa, the property owner, Ponderosa Enterprises, had been working with Mr. Hyman, and they've come up with this schematic, with this site plan, where they intend to have a convenience store gas station here, with the gas canopy over here, and some mixed-use, well, at least commercial area over here for office, and different retail potential over here off to this side. So, as staff, like I said, we were very concerned with the end product, and these are the elevations, or the, this is the, this is the pictures that the applicant has given us, that this is what they intend for the area to look like. So this did go through TRC, and it made, and TRC, there's a lot going on with this property, so I'll put this up here. TRC did recommend approval with the following agreed-upon conditions, that the property will not be used for mini-storage, and that a type A landscape buffer will be provided between the two GB uses, between the new conditional GB and the mobile home park there. And approval with the following conditions, that must be, these are the two, the first two are the ones that the applicant proposed. And the third, then from here on out, these are ones that must be agreed upon with the owner. Building architecture and design features shall be consistent with the photographs submitted with the application to provide consistency and compatibility with a nearby county complex. That residential usage should only be allowed through a mixed-use building to limit the density allowed at the airport approach zone to an appropriate level. That would be essentially a live-work situation, where you have essentially retail on the bottom, and some potential living quarters on the upstairs. The other, the fifth condition is place the fueling station canopy to the side and/or rear of the fuel and convenience center building, and move the building closer to Shortcut Road. This building front will be the most visible in the complex and should set the architectural tone and campus-like setting of the proposed development along Shortcut Road, a major arterial street. Provide a central courtyard with pedestrian features, like benches or a water feature, with buildings oriented inward toward a central courtyard to mimic the campus-like feel and pedestrian activity between employment areas and other uses as required by the Maple Barco Small Area Plan. Provide a handicap-accessible pedestrian connection to the mobile home park to encourage pedestrian activity between the uses. To provide a minimum and maximum building square footage to ensure compatibility with the area, and to impose the suggested two-story limit on all buildings because of the project's location in the airport zone. The 2006 land use plan classifies this as full-service, and the policy emphasis on the Barco Coinjack Airport subarea for the areas to emerge as the principal community center serving the central areas for the mainland. Now, there are several policies that support this rezoning. Policy CD1, neighborhood-serving commercial districts shall be encouraged. Policy CD2, commercial or mixed-use centers should be clustered to prevent strip development and minimize traffic generation. Policy CD4, highway-oriented commercial usage should be clustered along the highway to minimize signage access points and prevent strip development. There are also several, Maple Barco Small Area Plan that support this, support this rezoning. Policy LU4, in the Maple Barco, encourage and allow small locally-owned businesses to locate in the area. Policy LU9, the density, character of grown, and level of service must be appropriate for the study area. Policy TR4, infrastructure must be integrated into new developments that promote multimodal transportation and interconnecting employment centers, businesses, and neighborhoods. So the TRC and Planning Board recommend approval of this plan, and at the, let's see, at the Planning Board meeting, let me get to my notes, they approved it with the first two, that the property, that the first two conditions, the property will not be used for mini-storage, and that the type A landscape buffer will be provided between the GB size approved with those two. The other conditions, the Planning Board wanted those to be finalized at the, with the Board of Commissioners at this hearing. So, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Ms. Cicero-
Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, Ms. Cicero, a few years ago, we had a developer come in before us on the other side of the highway, a developer, and we looked at an impact zoning map, and we denied it because it was in that impact zone.
It's the airport overlay, and that was a question I was gonna have.
Yeah, and because it-
Height restrictions.
It was height restrictions, and with the, with individuals and the number of people living there, and I think that was a concern we had last time. This is obviously a lot closer to the airport than that one was, and that was about two or three years ago, I believe we discussed it, and it was a big concern about, at that time, about the impact zone. And I guess the second question is, and, Mr. Bob, you may be able to answer this a little better than me, but, I mean, doesn't the airport like some, the landing zone in front of that field or something?
Well, and that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, is yes, I know it falls under compatibility use, too, but on the plat, there's a fuel station right there, and, you know, that, and that close of proximity to Ponderosa Pines, you know, and we have had flight emergencies come in, and there was a Navy helicopter about a year and a half ago, and he wasn't sure he was gonna make it all the way to the runway. That would be a really lousy place to crash.
Well, and that, that appears to me, and without seeing the overlay and the flight patterns-
Well, no, that's, that's the extended center line of the runway, both in the approach-
Okay.
And the, and the departure is the center orange area. That yellow area to the outside is reasonable, you know, lining up center line to come into land, or on departure, you're gonna have a low-flying aircraft. You know, typically, where you'd be flying, where you cross that highway, aircraft are under 300 feet.
And your power lines right in that area, too?
Yeah. They're, they're a little further out.
And they're designating the area in the Zone 1 as stormwater management area, and the buildings would be in the two and three, the zones, airport zone overlays.
Was that overlay that we were looking at a couple years back?
I don't, I don't have it.
Well, that-
I mean, it was a lot broader than that, though.
Well, the airport overlay zone goes all the way out to the east, where that other development was gonna go in, so.
Ms. Cicero, if I can ask a question, did the Planning Board take into consideration any of this?
They did talk about the airport zones, and everything that they're doing, you know, this is gonna be, I think that, what came before you a few years ago was a multifamily, and I think it would not fit into one of the zones, the Zone 3.
It's single-family, is what's in this zone.
Yeah.
Over top of the multi-use, you said.
Mm-hmm, but it would be, it, so it would be, right now, they're showing, if there is any, it would be over top of, like I said, the live-work thing, over top of the retail.
But it could do it.
There could be, unless you want to change that condition.
Could they take and-
Say, for instance, they were developing this commercial area, and they wanted to put two condominiums, since you're allowing, you know, residential, could they build those separately if the commercial didn't go well?
No, this would be, this is a conditional GB.
Only living in the top.
Well, if they deviate significantly from this plan, they would have to come back. The site plan is attached to this approval, even though it's a conceptual plan, they would have to stay within these parameters, and if they, let's say they came back and they wanted to do condominiums, they would have to then ask for that site plan to be changed. Like I said, it would only be in a live-work situation where there is a retail or some kind of commercial component on the bottom.
Mr. Cicero, I understand they wanna build a gas station. What conditions, we're approving conditional use, what conditions are we allowing or not allowing? Like, are we being specific as to, well, they wanna do this, but if they wanted to do something else, we're rezoning it.
Yes, we are rezoning it.
Allow them to-
To have a variety of commercial or retail uses.
Right, so what are the allowable uses if we rezone it, and what would be the unallowable uses if we rezone it? Or is that specified yet?
We can put lots of restrictions on it, that was the-
Well, there's a myriad of them.
Mr. Hyman, are you biting at the bit to get up here and kinda talk to us?
We're, we're, we're almost there, we're almost there.
He could probably answer some of these things that we're questioning.
Well, well, I mean, this is a question for Ms. Cicero, for sure.
Yeah, it would be, it would be those, those uses that would generate employment, that would fall under, you know, so we're talking office, or small-scale retail, like a small restaurant. They are suggesting a seven, 7,000 to, 7,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. If there are certain businesses that we're concerned about, or certain types of businesses, that can be a condition.
That was, that was my question, you know, there, I mean, if you have residences next door, what types of businesses don't you want next door to a neighborhood?
Right, certain things, like, you know, nightclubs, you wouldn't want there, but there, for multipurpose buildings, and what they've listed in their conceptual plan is office, mixed-use residential, commercial, and commercial. So, and like I said, this is really a concept.
I guess my concern is that if we allow it to go in conditional use, general business, and, not saying they will, but they could put any number of things that might be undesirable to a neighborhood next door. So, do we need to take the time to be more specific as to what they cannot put there?
Yeah, we can.
I think that would be worth looking into, what they are allowed to do and what they are not allowed to do. I would hate for them to say, we're gonna do a gas station, and then do something, whatever the intent is. Again, originally, the gentleman was gonna rezone it so he could sell it. So, he might have good intentions on what he wants to do, but if he sells the property, the person that comes in behind him might not have such good intentions, and then, you know, we've got something undesirable next to a neighborhood, and that's what we wanna avoid.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing, you know, again, reviewing compatible use zones one and two, limits uses to single-family detached dwellings. And that's consistent in both Zones 1 and 2. So I don't know where the work-sleep mixture comes in, but I always understood that to be almost a townhome situation, sharing walls, that, those are not single-family detached, from my understanding.
And those would be in the area of the Zone 3, where compatible-
Base, okay.
Okay. I just wanna be really careful, before we allow it, that we're, we know what we're allowing to be put there. That's my concern. It might be worth taking the time to find that out.
And the other thing, I think we'd like to see what the airport overlay looks like on top of this layout.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Cicero at this time? Mr. Hyman, would you like to come up and speak? Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. My name is Eddie Hyman, with the Timon Group, and I'd be glad to answer some questions, but I'd like to start at the beginning, if that's possible. Mr. Ponderosa, Mr. Sawyer, you came to me about helping with this rezoning, the concept, conceptual rezoning, or a, put a plan together. I met several times with planning staff, and they were very helpful to iron out and put something together that the county could embrace. And what you see before you is that. We looked at the overlays, we looked at the slivers that were in the airport approach zones, the zones that were less limited, and the zones that aren't limited. And we've, we've laid out the site that way. Mr. Sawyer does not have a client in mind, but he did want to improve the marketability of his properties by getting a rezoning. If you approve what you see, this is a contract, basically, to build what you're looking at. It cannot deviate very much without coming back to you as a board. As well as, when a client does say, okay, I like what I see, I'm gonna invest and improve this property, they come back to you with full-blown design plans, with all the questions and all the answers, and all the limitations we're talking about, apply to the design plans they would come to you with. You can't see them all here very well, they faded out the overlay districts that are on here. And the, but there's areas, the, each one is spelled out in the legend what they are. And this, airport overlay Zone 3 is not restricted, just by the compatible use zone. Zone 2 is 70 people per acre, and suitable for low-capacity retail business. And Zone 1, 10 people per acre, parking, stormwater management, and things of that nature. And we have taken the lines from the plat and the overlay, and the approach zones and everything else, and we've put them on here, and we have used areas that are with allowable uses per the zone. So that's what you're looking at. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and try to let you see, but again, the approval of this isn't carte blanche, although I can do anything now that's within these permissible uses. This site plan is a part of the contract, anybody moving forward, and whatever you approve tonight, this is attached to it. So the next person in line, or a developer, potential developer that wants to look at it, has to adhere to this or start back at square one.
If I can, a question for Mr. McCree. If we, if we approve a project or a piece of land to go conditional general business, do we need to specify what conditions that they can use it in? Because if we don't, if we don't say they can't, that means they can. Is that correct?
Well, on its face, of course, the application is fairly broad, as to what they want to do relative to general business. Now, I think Mr. Hyman's correct, so long as they come in, and someone comes in and wants to build what is shown on the site plan, and that format, or that shape, that's one thing, the use is another.
That's where I have a concern. So if, if we can get, if we can narrow- So, if, if we can get, if we can narrow down what is, what will be allowable under this special use, under this use, that's going to go a long way in getting it approved.
All right, well, in the write-up, it tells you the style.
The style and all that, but what's going in it is the issue.
What type of business?
What type of business is going in it?
nightclub, for instance, in the 10,000.
Again, the way the law reads, if you don't specify you can't do something, that pretty much means that you can under a use permit. So, we need to get, I'm not trying to be difficult, just trying to make sure that we get it right, that we understand what is allowable there and what is not allowable there before we would approve it. So, that may take a conversation.
And I'll tell you, I'm looking at your legend and I'm looking at the layout, and I'm not sure I understand how we go from airport overlay Zone One to Zone Two, back to Zone One. And again, it's not hugely clear on this, but again, I'd really like to see what the airport overlay looks like on top of this because even, even in your legend where you say occupancy 10 people or more per acre, also in overlay Zone One is single-family dwellings per the UDO, according to the table that is in our packet. Same thing with Zone Two. So, I'm looking at Zone One, that you've got the stormwater management, that's good, and then the green space, that's good, but somehow in the middle of that, we got Zone Two with a gas, a fuel station.
Well, there's a, if you look at the zoning overlay, there's a dagger-shaped strip that comes in there, just between the buildings and the gas station.
Is that the yellow? Or the orange, I mean?
Yeah, the orange is Zone One and this is the Zone Two, the yellow.
And then Zone, then there's some orange.
And then the lighter yellow is the Zone Three.
Oh, I got it.
And that's where the dwellings are.
That would be, that, the side there would be.
They're in the green.
That's the mixed-use residential, commercial. So, we've worked around the zones as mapped out.
I don't think the layout is an issue, I think it's more of what we can and can't do and I just have concerns with allowing it before we know what they are.
Well, the permissible uses, we said no storage units and the, and we were also going to provide a buffer, a type A landscape buffer between the Ponderosa Mobile Home Park and this area. The other uses are restricted per the zones, one, and I, like I say, I've, as far as height and things of that nature. And if I'm not mistaken, and Ike, you may, the way we have written it out for the campus style, retail and uses, doesn't that go with it also? Doesn't that kind of define?
Well, it all does, but again, going back to the application, I mean, if you just read the plain words, proposed use is very broad, saying only uses compatible with GB zoning, office, commercial, personal service, institutional, et cetera, uses that provide employment opportunities for county residents and goods and services to county residents and visitors. Well, that is all very broad and so, I think, of course, I'm hearing some, some of the board members saying is that it probably would be worth an exercise going through the table of permitted uses for those uses allowed within the GB zone and staff and the applicant work through and clearly delineate what uses will be permitted under this application in the general business zone.
If I could ask, do you know of any current gas station at the foot of a runway anywhere? I'm not trying to be funny, I'm serious. That, that's my biggest concern, I think that's, that's my biggest one. And if not, we could give you some time. And then my second, if you don't know of any.
Well, no, I don't, but I do know that these lines are drawn with great detail. I've surveyed a lot of these approach zones and where they draw the line, they draw the line.
All right, Mr. McCree, my question to you is, if we were to vote to turn down this thing tonight, he would have to wait one year to bring it back up, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we might be better off served to continue with generally so we can work through these problems and not cost you a year.
I would like to, if it's possible, to readdress, we have looked at the permissible uses in the GB zones and we pretty much don't want to tie our hands or tie the potential buyers' hands with any limited use. But if that's going to be part of what you want to see, I'd be glad to bring back some, a list of things we will not allow. Like I said, many stores was one. I'd be glad to bring back a list of things that, that we will try to restrict from use in the, in the effort or in the flavor of what you see here, we can probably pick some items off the list and say, nothing here, or that will not go here. I think Mr. Sawyer would agree to letting us put together that and come back with that. Or would you?
This started approximately four years ago at a corporation meeting. My name is Dave Sawyer, Ponderosa Enterprises. I'm the guy that lives in that real dangerous spot right there on the middle of the map. But about four years ago, we held a family corporation meeting and it involved about this piece of property that we own. And I handle a lot of business for the corporation and I suggested that we always try to be good stewards of whatever we own. And we felt like this piece of property was, be much better off being utilized to help service what the county wanted to do across the street. I go over there every weekend just about and watch the ballgames and talk to the people. And I asked them, I said, where are y'all staying? They're staying, Elizabeth City's the closest spot. Where are you eating? You're eating at Three Amigos. What would accommodate you if you, if you had a place here besides a concession stand? They said, it'd be nice to have somewhere we could go, maybe sit down and have, have something, if it's just a deli, something similar to a Sheetz or, or a high-class 7-Eleven or something would just be of great value. The 7-Eleven at Barco has 11 spaces to park, including the handicap. And, but out of our corporate meeting, we thought, we wanted to utilize as good stewards what we had. Our expertise is in affordable housing. We own Ponderosa Mobile Home Park. I usually buy double wides, fix them up and sell them in the county to maybe some of your children or some of your grandchildren because there's no affordable housing in the county. We didn't want to go the route of using our expertise, we wanted to bring someone in that has expertise as to running a business, as to, and not necessarily, we, we're not believers in selling what we have, we like to partner with people. I don't know, we might end up having to sell because some people maybe don't want to partner with, with us. But at the same time, we wanted to present something that would be a big asset to the country, the county. I live on this piece of property. I think as far as the airport goes, I'd like to say this, I always spoke favorably of the airport. I, in past times, I went to commissioners when they're developing the airport and I said, I'm the person that's most affected probably by the airport in the whole county and I want to tell you that the noise sounds good to me. I like to see a Learjet fly by three or four times a week. I don't mind the noise, I don't mind the locals flying by because I feel like it benefits the county. It might be a hindrance to me, but it benefits the county more than it hinders me. And so, I, I wanted the airport. All these overlays started coming over my property all of a sudden. It really didn't bother me because I'm a person that enjoys going to the beach and if I want to swim in the ocean, I don't worry about getting ate by a shark. I live right on one of these approaches to the runway. If a helicopter flies and crashes in my bedroom, then it's mine and his time to go. If we're worried about things like that, maybe we should all join hands and walk home tonight instead of getting in our cars because there's much more of a chance of getting in a car wreck than it is any of these things happen. And it just bothers me that, I mean, I tried to just go through the process with the planning board last year, just talking to them. And we've gotten to a place in this county where we just can't talk and say, let's, let's improve the situation. And one of the first things I said to the planning board was, was it really comes down to a matter of trust. Are you going to trust somebody to develop their property to the best potential it can be developed and bring in expertise that knows how to develop the property and have them do it and have something that the county's proud of? Or do we want to say, no, let's don't develop that, let's don't do that because something might happen that we don't like? Well, if we go with our expertise, we'll probably put double wides out there. I don't want to do that, that's not the best use for that property. But it's a need in this county to have affordable housing. So, we can put double wides according to the density of population out in front of there and I can rent them out and probably make more money than I can developing this business. But we, as a family, wanted to utilize this property the best we could and to have some expertise come in, not tell them what they're going to do, but let them give us ideas as what they want to do. If we don't like it, we can tell them we don't want them to be there. And that's the way our family looks at it. There's so many restrictions between the Maple-Barco planning and the airport overlay that y'all have a lot of control what's going to go there to begin with. And so, I get back to what I said a year and a half ago, and that is, it's really a matter of trust. And if y'all don't feel like you can trust us, then let's vote on it tonight and tell me that. But I'm kind of right by it, to be honest with you. And I'm just ready for some action, so.
It isn't a matter of trusting you. Like you said, you may come to a situation where you have to sell that property. We don't know who's going to buy that property and, and what they might be wanting to put into it.
What can they put in there that would offend you?
What's that doing, what that's doing, if we don't protect what's going in there, something might, undesirable might go there, something that, someone that lives in a house next to it might not want.
What is, what is, better than asking me what? Yeah, better than asking me what?
That's why going through the, just, just taking a deep breath, going through what is and what isn't allowable is a smart thing to do. It protects the county and it protects you. I'm all for it, I have no problem with it whatsoever. I appreciate you wanting to step up and do it. I don't have an issue with it, I just want to make sure that the county's protected when they put in a conditional use permit, which has happened in the past, where, okay, well, it's, it's for this, well, you didn't say you couldn't do this, so we're allowed to do it. Then the county's in a bond. So, it's just worth taking a couple of weeks saying, this is what we're going to, these are the restrictions we're going to put on ourselves. And that's it, in my opinion. I don't know how anyone else feels.
I don't have a problem with the businesses, per se. The gas station, if you were quarter-mile to the right, to the left, not in that orange area with the gas station, I think gas stations do great there. I think the businesses are good because we need something there, somebody's got to start it, I agree with you. That gas station scares, I grew up near Oceana, okay? I mean, I'm telling you, when I, when I was there, Lynnhebe Mall didn't exist. And so, I mean, I've watched the planes come and go, I've watched some of them crash. And gas station, right at the foot, if, like I say, if you were quarter-mile either way, hey, I'm all for it on the gas. Businesses, I think it's fantastic. I think you're going to be the first guy out there and people are going to come in and say, hey, let's, how do we, you know, come off of your stuff? I think that's the next area that we're going to be commercializing.
Well, as far as Oceana, I would take and be amazed at the percentage of how many flights fly in and out of Oceana and how many have crashed in the areas.
But I'm looking at the foot of the runway and these are small planes, little bit lower, maybe, you know, maybe not as well-maintained or maybe better maintained, I'm not sure.
The center of the runway as it runs is, there's a set of holes in the middle of the field in front of my house to the west. And the center of the runway is to the west of those. The reason that one little area is in there is, is just a cut-through in case a man needed emergency landing or something of that nature, that's the cut-through. But the actual center of the runway is probably 300 or 400 yards across the field in front of my house. And, and so, and as far as that goes, what are we doing with a college campus sitting right there in the same vicinity? I mean, there's, there's going to be, you know, people there all the time.
Like I say, again, businesses, I don't have a problem with at all, I agree with you 100%.
Mr. Hyman.
That's why I'd like to take a little bit of time.
I, I'm sorry, I did review, it's not very.
It's not clear.
It's not very intuitive in looking at your plat, right? But I went back and looked at the airport plan and then went, okay, now I kind of get it. Again, I, I don't, you're right, the multi-use is outside of the, you know, it's in Zone Three, so that's, that's not a problem. I do have a concern about a fuel location in Zone Two, right? You know, to answer your question, I've been allowed of, I've been around a lot of aviation, military and, and civilian, and there are a lot of flights that go in and out of Oceana. All of those aircraft have at least two engines. And if you look at the majority of the aircraft that come in here, those are single-engine typically. So, my concern, and, and the most dangerous aspects of flight are during landing and during takeoff, which is why you've got those zones that are there. That's my only concern and, but I don't know of fuel stations that are that close to the center line of a runway. And I understand it's not completely the center line, but when you're going down, typically you don't get to crash straight ahead, normally something else is going on and you're going off to the sides. Although I haven't done that ever, but that, that would be my concern.
And one of the first things that I met with Donna, the first thing that I asked her was, how does the overlays impact, you know, the development of this? And I find it kind of ironic, my first question to her, which was put to rest, was y'all's first concern tonight. And so, so I, I mean, you know, so the planning board never really considered what you're considering being a question, in other words, if it's allowed, it's allowed, if it's not, it's not.
Oh, and let me address your, the college concern. Again, the most dangerous locations with aviation are center line of the runway. They're actually inside the pattern, believe it or not, that's one of the safest places to be is inside of where all the aircraft are doing their, their approach work. So, the reason you're getting it is because this board, a year and a half ago, went through all of this with the multifamily, high-density housing, which is not this, right?
We're not proposing that.
And that was, if you looked at Downwind or the, the pattern, it was basically.
You gave us guidelines by the districts and we're going to.
Not adhering to those, we're going to be, get outside of those. But like I said, I.
I, I too, I'm in, I'm not in favor of voting on this issue tonight, right? But if you would, but, and I'd be happy to make a motion to table the event, but if you could come back and say, here's the kind of things that we, you're fine on the outside, right? I, I, well, I take that back. We'd like to know what, what businesses we would limit.
That's my only hang-up. What about, really, it's my only hang-up.
Is it possible at all to flip the property? So, the fuel station goes to the, to the, it just, it just moves it that much more out of your.
It actually, it can't because they've got, where they want to put the apartments, conceptually, is right in the zone that they can't do that.
Got it, got it.
And it's not, that's not a height problem. That's a, that's to identify the most dangerous areas in airport operations.
Mr. Hyman, Mr. Sawyer, I am too in favor, I think it would be an asset. We have really tried hard to develop the Maple area and, and, you know, Mr. Commissioner Hall said that, you know, you might be the cornerstone that really starts the development in the industrial area. But I too, and I don't want to make a decision tonight because if I had to, it would probably be to deny it, but I would like that opportunity for us to have another conversation either with the planning, with us, you know, where we can come up with, with good, sound, defined directions of what the proposed would be.
Yes.
And, and with that, what timeframe would it take you to, to come up with that, Mr. Cicero? Between you guys, I mean, our next meeting, the following meeting, I mean, you know, we're not, we're not talking about a year down the road, I mean.
Couple of weeks.
This whole thing, what really is amazebes for the whole process is. Is I always get people asking me what I want to eliminate. Well, if, maybe you have a problem with some things, maybe we could just start with it that way.
That's why we're, we're suggesting to have.
So, you know.
That's why we're suggesting to have a conversation with staff.
Yeah.
Because they kind of know what, what we're, what we're wanting, what we're not wanting and they're, they're more well-versed.
Because I want to, you know, going over what the GB, you know, we don't want a nightclub, we've eliminated that. Storage, we actually could double, we got storage on the building, part of that red that you saw up there that we're giving back from the general business to conditional would allow us to put twice as much storage now already it's been approved. But we'd rather not do that, we'd rather develop it in some meaningful way. And I'm dealing with an 88 and 89-year-old mother and father who, my dad's sharp and my mom, she goes along with what he says. And my brother and sister, they're, they're involved in the corporation. And to be quite honest, I know it hadn't been in front of you, but I've been dealing with them for about two years now, two and a half years, trying to just get something we feel like is very simple that would be an asset to the county move forward. So, if y'all could get together and tell me what y'all could approve, I would really appreciate that.
Well, and that's going to have to be a. Well, and that's going to have to be a collaboration between the planning staff and yourself.
And really, we're just, we just want to talk it through for a couple of weeks.
I think we can be ready in two weeks to come back.
I think the planning staff can have a conversation with both of these gentlemen to narrow down a list of permitted uses.
And they would get that information us ahead of time, so we could say, well, okay, well, we approve, you know, we want to have this, or we don't want to have whatever. I'm bringing it to the next meeting. We're just, we just want to be really careful. Again, it's, it isn't you that we're worried about. It's the gentleman or the group after.
Right.
And that's where we have, it's our job to protect the whole, you know, to protect the county against something like that happening. That's my only concern. That is my only concern.
You know, it's our concern also. We want to develop the property. I live there. I want to develop it to the greatest extent I can, be the nicest thing it could be. I'm going to, I mean, I'd rather have the cows having calves out in front of my yard. But that's not the most, the best use for the property.
Right. Well, thank you. And again, like I said, give us the opportunity and let's see what we can come up with, find a happy medium.
Okay. No, we haven't had a public hearing yet. So any further discussion with these two gentlemen from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll open a public hearing. I don't have anyone scheduled to speak to this issue. Would anyone like to speak? Nope. With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue this the first meeting in November, so it gives a chance for these, Ms. Sawyer and Ms. Hyman, to speak with our county staff and come back with us with some options.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. So we'll see y'all first meeting in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on, consideration of an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending Chapter 9, Article 1 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances by adding Section 9-10 regulating campaigning on county property. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, this is before you, in order to give effect to a resolution adopted by the Currituck County Board of Elections regarding one-stop or early voting. Evidently, over the last couple of election cycles, campaign activity has increased such at the Board of Elections' office where early voting or one-stop voting takes place, that the Board of Elections felt like it was necessary, as they say in their resolution that's included in your agenda package, to protect rights of voters and campaigners and to allow voters and others accessing Elections Office reasonable ingress and egress during one-stop or early voting. So what the ordinance will do is to codify or put into your Code of Ordinances and have the effect of law the rules that the Board of Elections has adopted under their statutory authority by resolution contained in your agenda package, which would be to provide for an area adjacent to the buffer zone that the Board of Elections will erect pursuant to state law, in which each candidate would be limited to two political yard signs plus one handheld sign, with each sign not to exceed 18 by 24 inches in size, to be placed in a designated area adjacent to the buffer zone where no campaign activity can take place by state law. That political yard signs may be placed at the Board of Elections' one-stop voting site no earlier than one hour before the start of voting each day and must be removed upon the close of voting each day. In addition, they will provide for the buffer zone I mentioned a moment ago, which will be 50 feet from the entrance of the building, thus pursuant to state law. That the area provided for political yard signs and campaigners will be on the south side of the entrance, outside of the buffer zone in a grassy area that will be delineated by the Board of Elections. And that such regulations remain in effect when and during early voting at the Currituck County Board of Elections' office. That is the ordinance that's before you.
So does it?
And the ordinance in addition provides there to be no cooking or preparation of foods on county property. That's right.
So is it specifying where you can put the signs? Two questions. Does it specify that you have to put the signs away from where the poll workers are working, where the election folks are working?
Well, the Board of Elections will, their staff will be establishing and designating an area for campaign signs and campaigners outside of the 50-foot buffer area.
And does it specify one sign per person that's working? So if a candidate has 10 people working, can he have 10 people holding a sign, or is it one sign?
Well, the Board of Elections' rule is each candidate will be limited to two political yard signs plus one held-hand sign.
One handheld sign.
So that's three per candidate.
Three total. Okay.
One question was asked me, and I couldn't really answer it, maybe Ms. Etheridge or somebody. Why are they having to be taken down every night and then put up every morning? I mean, is it, was it just because it'd be blow-around, or?
Well, first of all, we, temporary signs are not allowed on county property in any event. That's to begin with. And so, there is some allowance made for temporary signs on county property during one-stop or early voting.
The reason, I think the reason he's asking is, is other counties don't, they don't have a specification as to when you can take them up or put them down.
Well, we've kind of thought about it as well. I don't know what other counties, particularly in this region, have, I guess, Elections Offices and one-stop voting places that are specifically located within a parcel of county property and a county with an ordinance that prohibits the location of temporary signage on that county property.
That was the reason we passed it, because it was on county property.
Okay, fair enough. I'm good with that. Any questions for Mr. McCree? Any statements from the board?
Statement.
Statement.
Well, let's go to the first one. No yard sign, 18 by 24. There are at least, and I'll say, other than Ms. Etheridge, I think I've spent more time at early voting than any other member on this board, on early voting, time, total timeframe. 18 by 24, there are at least two candidates I know that have yard signs that are in the yard, they are considered yard signs, that are 24 by 24. They now make those obsolete, which means those people cannot use those signs. That is still considered a yard sign at 24 by 24. That's six inches more. As to the other part where it talks about only on the south side, which is the side to the right of the door. In the past, you, and I'll use it in blunt terms, the Democrats and the Republicans, some days the Republicans would have the ones on the right side, and sometimes the Democrats the next day would have the right, and the Democrats would be on the other side. And that had no problem. It's over the last period of time that it seems to have deteriorated, that it's become a need for no overnight signs, signs coming down at a specific time when they can go up. But I think to take away the ability of yard signs being 24 by 24 for people that already exist, and taking away the south side, or excuse me, the north side, to where you can separate the people if they can't get along, and that has happened.
That's.
You know, I think, I think it's important to keep both sides, and that way there is no fight, and it has to be in a common agreement, which always was in the past until this last time, that sometimes different groups would be on one side and one side on the other, and they swapped every day.
The other thing I would suggest, or that, again, addressing the north side, you know, if the first group to the battlefield, right, puts up two signs per candidate or candidate that they favor, the reality is you're going to run out of road frontage real fast on just the south side. The north side at least presented the opportunity to get another, you know. In fact, I would limit one sign per south, one per north. That way, everyone can get a shot at having prime time.
I agree.
Instead of getting there 5:00 in the morning and waiting?
Pretty much.
Camping out in bars.
I think the spirit of the ordinance was to keep things from getting out of control. I think we're doing a great job. You put two signs on the south side of the building, everyone's in the same location. If you have two signs per candidate, you're not going to run out of space. There were, there were 40 signs lined up in the front of, from the front to the side. There was 40 signs lined up in the primary. Some people would have 10 of the same candidate or 15 of the same candidate. It was just out of control. There's ample room on the east side and on the north side where that roped-in area is to put two signs and for one person to hold a sign. The idea is to not let things get out of control. That's all. I think we're overcomplicating the matter, quite frankly.
I mean, you do have a big.
Are any candidates currently running for office that have two-foot by two-foot signs?
I don't believe so. At this moment, no.
Okay.
Those, at this time.
Okay.
If we don't pass it tonight, it won't affect the one-stop voting, right?
That's correct.
At 100%.
Any further statements or concerns?
And it can be tweaked later.
Any further statements or concerns? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I move to amend Chapter 9, Article 1 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances by adding Section 9 through 10 regarding campaigning on county property.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have six ayes and one no, motion passes.
Chairman, just to advise the board, as you understand, if it's not a unanimous vote at the first reading of an ordinance, it does not pass, and we'll have to come back for a second reading at your next meeting.
All right, I guess I got to go buy a grill.
I would say that.
I guess I got to go buy a grill.
Hold on, hold on. I am against the part of the grill. Now, if I withdraw, even though we voted now, can I, we step back and draw and have more discussion?
You can vote, make a motion to reconsider the last vote, which have to be voted on affirmatively in order then to consider another motion relative to this ordinance.
All right, I make such a motion to reconsider.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Floor is open for a motion.
Well, I'd like to little, I am against the grill. I'm 100% there. I like that idea. I'm just concerned, again, at least the separation gives some cooling down if needed be. I just think you guys need to reconsider that part. I think, yes, we can tweak it later. If you tell me after early voting, before the next election, that, or shortly after this one, we'll come back and put it on the agenda already, I'm all for it.
So are you asking to not limit signs? Are you saying you can have as many signs, or just one to the north?
I like the two, I like the two signs.
Two designated areas.
The north and south. I agree with the two signs and one handheld. I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, just for a bit of a point of clarification, too, the way this is being constructed and in front of you is you are simply recognizing the ability of the Board of Elections to establish certain rules. So the pieces that you're discussing are really not in the ordinance. Those are things, those are conditions that the Board of Elections has decided that they felt was appropriate to bring some order. I believe it might be more appropriate to take those comments to the Board of Elections. They can, at their meeting, adjust or tweak or modify them. What you're just doing is codifying and recognizing their ability to establish rules and regulations around one-stop. That's, you're only doing, whatever rules and regulations they adopt, you're recognizing them.
So they would not have to come back to us.
And limiting power.
They would have to come back to us.
No, you're just recognizing their ability to do regulations. And so, the comments you're making today would be more appropriate taking to the Board of Elections and asking them to modify what they've adopted, and they can do it as fast as they, as a body can meet and agree to modify them. They can do that. That's how this is being constructed and brought to you. And so, you're not necessarily commenting specifically on those rules. You're just recognizing the Board of Elections' authority to establish those rules.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can come to an agreement.
So is there another motion?
I guess we have to now.
I move to amend Chapter 9, Article 1 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances by adding Section 9 through 10 regarding campaigning on county property.
And I'll second that. Nope.
He put a motion out, he answered your motion.
He already did.
We voted on it.
We voted on it. I think he already voted on the motion to reconsider that pass. It was then allowed for a new motion to be on the floor.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Any further discussion?
I will speak to the Board of Elections concerning tweaking it a little bit.
Any further discussion other than tweaking? Is there any twerking going on?
No.
We're just tweaking?
Tweaking.
Tweaking? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. That got really complicated quick. Consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
One thing, if you will, please. Mr. Scanlon, the employee policy, I'd like to just talk about that for a minute on, I
Now, what the agenda item is, is, and Commissioner Payment might be able to speak to this, is the ABC Board has to have an approved policy for their employees, and the Board of Commissioners are recognizing or agreeing with that policy, and they've decided to put the same policy the county has on our employees on their employees. So what's in front of you is nothing to do with the travel policy of Currituck County employees. It's recognizing and authorizing the Board of, the ABC Board, to adopt the same policy for their employees.
Yeah, the ABC Board was just looking for some consistency, and we feel like that county's policies were perfect to accommodate our needs, so.
Yep, just was a little confused on that one, so thank you.
Motion for approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. County managers report?
Nothing, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I will recess the regular meeting and call to order a special meeting of the Hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a handful of budget amendments to be considered by the TDA, and I will go through those. The first one, as was mentioned by Commissioner White earlier, is to move funds into a project ordinance to start the process of the design of the county's 10 acres that we have in Corolla to accommodate an ABC store and possibly a future visitor center, county office space, along with public bathrooms and parking. So there's a $100,000 budget amendment to do that. These funds were budgeted during the budget process last year. The next budget item is, by statutes, budgets expire June 30th, and there was a couple of projects that were being undertaken last year and were funded last year that did not complete June 30th. And so, funds are being carried forward into this year. So these are funds that were authorized last year but unspent, being brought forward this year to finish up a contract that was underway and expands the two fiscal years. Next budget amendment is to transfer some money to help offset additional costs for some software licensing fees. And I believe the last budget amendment is, now that the summer season is over, the finance staff has made a strong attempt to identify all costs that was incurred to put the parking pass, beach driving change in place to monitor it and enforce it. All those costs were identified, and we are looking to use proceeds from the parking passes to reimburse the cost of, that we incurred, and to put money back in oxy tax that had originally been used to help us get into the program and to manage the program. So this is replacing oxy tax and putting it back into the fund. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you'll have on any one of these budget amendments.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Need to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the TDA.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, I'll reconvene your regular. With that, I'll reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners to enter in a closed session pursuant to 143-318.11A3 to consult with county attorney and to preserve the county client privilege regarding the matter captioned Judith Ayers versus Currituck County Department of Social Services. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to invite our assistant county manager into this closed session?
Absolutely. You don't get to go home early.